I'm now calling the Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty one special meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners, Standing Budget Subcommittee to Order. The time is seven oh six P M. At the September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one Commission Meeting, Commissioners volunteered and were appointed by a vote of the Commission to be members of a Standing Budget Subcommittee. The Subcommittee now needs to decide which of you should conduct this meeting and thereby serve as Chair of tonight's meeting. Subcommittee members, anyone want to volunteer or suggest a selection of Chair?
Joan, would you like to do it? If not, I'm happy to have you do it because I'm doing another another Subcommittee. I'm not, George is so busy, I don't even want to put his name up for it unless he's itching to do it. Yeah, so I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to have you do it, Joan, if you'd like to do as well, because I've been part of the Budget Subcommittee for the past two or three years. So entirely, it doesn't matter to me.
Thanks for that, Roger. I think first time around, I'm going to let someone else take the spot. Okay. I'd be happy to assist and and maybe take on more when I can.
Okay.
Okay, Chair Spring, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, please note that in support of physical distancing during the pub- local public health emergency, this meeting is being held remotely in pursuit of the Government Code Section five four nine five three E. Because of your video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of recording. I will indicate when Commissioner's staff and the public provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. Please practice considerate video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you are not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Sherlock? Oh, Joan, you're muted. Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Spring?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Okay, and three Commissioners are present, which is a quorum for the Standing Budget Subcommittee. And for the benefit of the recording, I'm also going to conduct Consultants and Staff Roll Call, Strategic Planning Consultant Scott.
Here.
General Manager Logan.
Here.
Lead Deputy County Counsel Chalidin.
Here.
And the Consultants and Staff are accounted for.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to item two, public comment. Persons, let's see, let's see, should I still read this despite having the members of the public present? I'm happy to, but.
I don't think so.
Okay, in that case, we will, I will consider item two, public comment closed, as there's no members of the public here to comment. Let's see, we'll now move on to item three, Discussion of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Draft Budget for Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty three. General Manager Logan and Financial Consultant Vargas, please introduce the item.
I will just say a few words and just thank you for your presence and your participation in the Subcommittee. It's very important. We're starting early with very tentative numbers, so this is really a great opportunity for you as Commissioners, as the Subcommittee, to help us align the budget as you aspire for it to be and then move it to the full Commission on November sixteenth and onward. And Cory will explain all the timelines. So thank you for allowing me these comments.
Thank you, Jay. So I'm going to go into share screen, provided I can figure out where am I. There we go. And I think for tonight's meeting, can everybody see, okay?
Yep.
Am I? Okay.
Or you probably want to go to full screen?
Okay.
The little icon at the bottom? Presentation.
Presentation. I mean, get to that.
To the bottom, right?
Bottom. I'm new to this. Bottom right, first icon. There you go, that little thing right there.
No, 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 sorry.
That one.
This one. Thank you. Okay, so I'm just going to now, how do I, there you go. As you can see, I don't share screens often. I'm usually just being the clerk. So, yeah, just a quick introduction of the budget process. You know, our mission, I think you're all familiar with that, protecting the lives, property, environment, community. Our three pillars, the CWPP, our successor strategic plan, and then, of course, the third is what we are going to be talking about tonight, the budget. And all of these three pillars is are built upon these three pillars is our forward-looking community resilience chart, which Jay and Sarah actually updated today, so right before the meeting, and you were all emailed that. Jay, I don't know if you want to briefly talk about that, or?
I'll come back to it, Cory. Just go ahead and then I'll pull it up as needed. Thank you.
Yeah, so tonight's meeting, I keep wanting to scroll. So the budget overview, obviously, tonight, you were being presented with, as Jay said, very the very rudiments of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty two, twenty three budget. And we've accumulated that strong fund balance, its past five years and projected to do the same for this current year. So that's six years total of of padding our fund balance. And of course, as you know, we were expanding our integrated hazardous fuel reduction programs, we're collaborating with regional agencies to strengthen the IHFR and community resiliency, and we've been increasing our personnel and consulting resources, GIS, the videographer services, Marcy, who's with us right now for, you know, strategic plan, and then RG also is doing our records retention. So, you know, we've really been getting a lot done this last year, and I want to continue to keep that momentum and expand. Now, I've presented the balance sheet here. I just want to go over real quick. Can you see my little cursor when I scroll or no?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, okay. You see me like moving your pictures around too? That's embarrassing. Okay. Our capital assets, which are right here, what had happened when we did the two thousand and twenty two budget, we had thought that we were going to be adding all of the hydrant infrastructure, which was never recorded as a capital asset. But what happened is after I talked with the auditor, he said, well, no, you but you expensed it in the year that that you purchased it, so it wasn't capitalized. So I had planned to increase that number, but it did not end up happening. So instead, what we've reprojected, we're going to be getting that lovely masticator, we're going to be getting a grass mower, and we're going to be getting a trailer all before fiscal year twenty two ends on June thirtieth. And that's estimated to be about two hundred and fifty thousand less accumulated depreciation for twenty three. Again, it goes up a little bit because we're hoping that that masticator is a huge success. And so I've kind of budgeted for the possibility of purchasing another remote control masticator.
Can we interrupt during?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Well, I'm back on the topic of the hydrants. Does that say that the hydrants really don't show up on our balance sheet at all?
They are, the, it's the infrastructure. So what happened is when, you know, years ago, when these things were recorded into onto our balance sheet, we were only told how much the hydrant cost. We were not, we didn't take into account all of the valves, the infrastructure, everything that's underneath. So what happened is that just ended up being expensed. Now, the county does not track any of our assets. So us tracking the assets is kind of an internal thing that we do. So as far as for the financial audit was concerned, you know, I was saying, oh, let's add it. I want to show it on our balance sheet. The auditor said, you know what, it's a, it's gonna be a huge hassle. It's not worth it, you know, it, the, per the county. It's, doesn't matter whether you capitalize or expense it because they're not tracking your assets, so just leave it as it is.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and I made sure that it didn't affect our insurance. You know, I didn't want our insurance provider to look at our balance sheet and go, wait a second, you say you got, you know, five million, but here it says you only have one million. It's no effect whatsoever on that. So it's just more.
It's an off-balance, it's an off-book item.
It's an off-balance, balance sheet, yeah, and it's just, it's so many years past that, yeah, it, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, we're.
I was just curious behind that. So, yeah, yeah, to know that that's one of our major assets, but it's not going to be in the financial pages.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to show properly as to what our capital assets actually are. I think at this point, probably the ones that we're tracking the most because the hydrants have been depreciating, it's the fire station.
Fire station, so, okay. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Sure, sure. And, okay, so covered. Anyway, balance sheet is standard. You know, we have these funds that we committed way back in two thousand and twenty one. Again, county doesn't, doesn't track our committed funds. For them, everything is the unassigned fund balance. And again, this is just kind of a internal tracking that we do to show our intent of what we would like to spend things on. And I think Chris is currently still researching whether we can, whether the Board of Commissioners is the the top authority, position-making authority to recommit those funds. But in the meantime, we're just keeping what we have, and we're not going to focus on that until we get a determination. Is that, is that an accurate statement, Chris?
For purposes of a public hearing, for me to to give legal advice, I think that's okay, I think that's as much update as I can give right at this moment.
Okay.
And we'll be back on that topic very soon.
To be determined. Okay.
So I would just say that on this topic, I'm certainly a proponent of this direction, really for Joan's benefit, just a little history that this was was the same way we did for town of Los Altos Hills, we looked at our, instead of people always talking about, there's that fund balance you have, you know, it was our way of telling the public that, look, this is not just a say, a picky bank, there are things that we're going to have in the future that we need to prepare for, be it for emergency operations, be it for building replacement, and we should be, this is kind of early planning for where these, this fund would go. And so we tried to bring that concept also into the Fire District as well, to remind people that we're going to have improvements to the and rehab on the fire station is going to be required. So we don't want people to think that money is just sitting there, that there really is going to be a future need for it. And this is really a notate, a way of notating that, whether it's legal from our financial records point of view is another question for Cory and Chris to figure out. But that was the, the purpose of this was really to denote our future direction of where these funds should, will have a potential purpose.
That's correct, yes. All right, let me move on to the next slide. Okay, so revenues, I don't have much to talk about revenues right now because county provides that to us, the Office of Budget Analysis, and that I will not have until early December. And as far as the, our interest, the last quarterly investment report I received from county is from June, so I kind of want to wait until I get the most recent one from September, which should be coming within the next week or so. So then I'll be able to get more accurate figures. So I just did quick, quick, very, very rough estimates of what I think, but this is in no, it's probably going to be more. So just keep that in mind that, you know, we were, we don't know what money we're working with right now, but I'm thinking chances are this is a pretty fair guess as to what we can expect to have as far as then what expenses we can, but what we can spend this year. So me, now we're going to start going with spending. So our operating expenditures, I think, pretty obvious, the insurance premiums, those are going to be raising, it's just insurance rates have gone up due to COVID. We, for workers' comp, we have a new employee that we'll get to when we get down to salaries and employment position. I've done an increase to maintenance structure and grounds. So Dave Barnett, our Integrated Hazard Fuel Reduction Consultant, soon-to-be Operations Manager, provided me with a spreadsheet of projects and and things that, that cost estimates and projects that he'd like to see during the fiscal year. And one of the ones he would like to do is to get that district lot that we have, that empty lot, get something going there. So kind of still in the early stages of that, I figure fiscal year twenty three, it might just be some fencing, some paving, I don't know, not, not big expenditures like trip trailers or temporary buildings yet. But you'll see when we get down to outside services, we have budgeted more for the design phase of all of that. So in the actual fiscal year twenty three, I don't think there'll be much construction that would be for twenty four. Everything else, I don't know if there's anything really big. Oh, the, the property tax admin fee and the cost allocation plan, which actually I just got today. So cost allocation plan for the year is actually going to be thirty nine thousand. So, look, we just saved ourselves about seven thousand there. I had estimated sixty seven, and it's thirty nine something. So again, I'll, I'll have to update these numbers when I get them from county. So I don't know if there's any questions about operations. I think it's pretty straightforward, nothing new really going on there.
I just noticed the, the increase in the publications and legal notices, does this have to do with things like our outreach for things like the shaded fuel break?
So this, the publications and legal notices are going to be things like the, really what I'm thinking is more like RFPs when we have to make the legal notices. Because I know during fiscal year twenty three, we're going to be doing, we have to get a new auditor. We're going to have the, the planned evacuation route hardening. This is going to be, you know, it's like Commissioner vacancy ads, it's, it's the publications that we have, the the outreach and all of that, that's set down under projects and programs where we have, I can't remember the name of it. What is that, the count? Communications and outreach. So we have that down in projects and programs.
I see.
For that, yeah. Okay.
I've got it on my other screen.
All right, any, any other questions, Joan? You're good? I assume, all right, so salaries and payrolls, this is the, I guess, going to be the first sort of thing that we want to delve into. There was suggestion that perhaps we should have an administration manager, somebody that can assist Jay. This would be a full-time position, and this person is going to help with administrative and and district operations. So we heard that the management audit reports, those are going to be going on for another year. Our strategic plan ends fiscal year twenty two, we're going to have, you know, a new fiscal year twenty three on strategic plan, getting agendas together, getting contracts, resolutions, agreements together would really help, I think, take a load off of Jay's work. So that was suggested by Roger, actually. And so I just wanted to see sort of what George and Joan, what you think about if you have any any feedback, feedback or or other suggestions, I'd love to hear it. But all other positions are staying the same.
Yeah, let me, let me give a little more on that.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
As we talk more about stuff to come, in my early feedback to Cory, you know, and I'm not trying to get ahead of us, a lot of our bottleneck is on, on the number of hands we have, things done, the number of agreements we've got, and it's a growing number of administrative tasks just to keep all these balls in the air, let alone meetings like this and and dealing with, you know, the county and the very, and there's so many administrative tasks that Jay has pulled into, let alone the meetings and so forth. It's kind of like having, you know, Dave is kind of one half of her, there's another half that's missing, which is all administrative side of things. So it really is someone who has experience at doing these things and can interface with the county and Chris and others at a credible level and really takes on a little off Jade, because right now she's kind of indispensable at those tasks, and you never want to have an indispensable person. So we want to have her deal with more strategic items and other ways for us to actually grow the district and use some of these funds we have. Right now, she's more than full-time, being done a lot of administrative tasks, which I'd like to see someone else doing. That, that was where this came from. I thought that, you know, we're looking, we're talking about eighteen months out from now, in terms of budgeting, I thought, gee, over the next eighteen months, there's got to be room for another person to come in and really help with those tasks. So that's why I felt like someone, a slot was needed for that kind of thing.
And for the number here, is that including all benefits, everything altogether, or is that just salary?
This is just salary. We don't have benefits, so there is no.
Is there anything else that would be covered in?
Yeah, yeah, so, so there's no, no health insurance, no, no pension. So it's, yeah, this is just a flat rate salary.
And how was this number arrived at?
This was, we based it upon, it would be sort of an equal position to Dave Barnett. So it would be equal compensation, equal skill set, just a different, or different kind of skill set, but equal.
Yeah, equal level.
Equal level, thank you, yeah.
I can respond to that a bit, Joan. What it really is based on is an hourly salary that is about eighty five dollars an hour, which for a person with an experience level, and then it's two thousand eighty hours per year is full-time. So it's just a simple math coming out about a hundred and eighty thousand, and that's commensurate with what the Operations Manager and the Emergency Services Manager, they're right in that salary range. To go under that, I don't think you would be competitive at all, because there's no, I mean, if you're going to hire someone at an administrative level, there's no sick leave, or there's no benefits as far as any of that or retirement. So we have a very limited pool that we can draw from with no other kind of benefits to the employee.
Gotcha, thanks.
Sure.
Well, you know, we're, we're still relatively new in this whole having employees thing. And, and so I think it's a fair question. So, so in general, I'm, I mean, in support of making sure that we have the resources so that all these programs can actually happen on a schedule. And, and I think that there's a sense of urgency. I think we all want to push forwards. I don't have any particular sense for what the salary level and all should be. I think we should be open to looking at if we're able to attract the, what it takes for us to attract the kind of caliber of person we want here. And if it turns out that we need to have additional benefits or something to make that work for the kinds of person, then I think we should be open to that. And, and having said that, then this could just be a placeholder for a total spend that we could work from. I didn't quite catch the eighteen-month thing, because it looks like this would start in six months.
All right, what I mean was, we're basically talking about, you know, the end of this budget is going to cover to the end of July two thousand and twenty three, because, you know, a little more than eighteen months from now. So okay, this is, this is an important page, because it's really, and maybe we want to spend more time on it. This says how big our staff would be at, well, actually, nineteen months from now. Yeah. And we're really only adding, you know, in terms strategically, an administration manager. So that's why I'm saying this is, that's a lot of time and a lot of projects that are going to happen the next eighteen months minimum, and this is where we would, what we would end up with staff-wise. And I think what we're going to see is, and again, I'm kind of getting ahead, but one of our limiting factors in taking on more projects, because my first comment, by the way, when I saw, you know, the whole budget was, I went through hearing, how, where can we spend more and do more with our residents' money for our residents? And we are limited in what we can do for our residents by the number of people who can administer all these projects and handle all the administration that goes with them. And you kind of have to do that hand in hand. You can't just grow one side or the other. And I'm just thinking, eighteen months out, is this the right size for us in terms of growth? And I, and I also certainly, so maybe there are other staff positions that need to happen. We may not be aware of what is most needed yet. But that's why I think this is an important page for us to really understand. And George, I think your comments about whether we are, can make attractive offers is a good one. I don't have any answers to it. It's a very, a whole important discussion to have, but I think it's, you know, sorry to be too wordy here. One of the key things about discussing this budget overall is this is really a chance for us to say strategically, where do we see this organization being eighteen months from now? And, you know, this is an important one. I mean, only two years ago, we had zero people in these. And now we're seeing an explosion of things happening, which is great. And we are still completely dependent on the people in these slots right now. And are these the right slots? You know, how, what can we predict eighteen months out? That's what this is really saying.
Yeah, well, I think if you look at the strategic plan and you look where we're trying to grow, is this the key area that you think should be supported? Was that how it was arrived out?
Really, I think what was arrived out was this is essentially what we have today, and my one comment was I see a logjam at Jay's level where we've got more than one person's job being done by one person. And, you know, how we, and, and, you know, you can't grow instantly, and we couldn't grow instantly, so we couldn't just add a whole lot of rows. You know, we need to know where you want these things to go. And I think that as Dave has come on board, we now have a very good, you know, we're getting a much more fleshed-out structure with both strategic views and tactical views with Denise and Dave and with the variety of analysts and part-time folks that are working with Jay to really handle a lot of the detail work. I think it works very well. That is going to limit, you know, but that is the limit of what we can accomplish is with those people. You know, we are not, by the way, this, this budget will go beyond the period that our current strategic plan covers. That's another thing for us to discuss here. So the question is, what is the next set of growth, if any, this organization should take on? You know, what's our next level that we're trying to get to? I'm, I'm not making a statement of what I think that is. I don't know, because I'm not someone, you know, I like to go lean on things. But I, right, right now, I've got a lot of projects going on that I don't think are going to go away. And I want to make sure we have the right amount. I don't want anyone getting burned out getting those done.
Can I suggest that maybe Marcy could add a few comments? Because Marcy is looking at the total organization as a whole, has a very interesting perspective as a consultant that works with many agencies. And Marcy, you know, not, not to have you interject here, but if you have any comments, it would be helpful, maybe?
Sure. Really, at the core of it is, we're talking about expanding programs. And as Dave has come into the organization and really been reaching out to some of the regional partners and relationships he has, and in working with Denise and Victoria and all the staff, you know, we, we have been working on the strategic fuel break, and then what projects we can do in support of that, you know, in certain boundary areas, looking at vegetation reduction, the hardening of the evacuation routes, and looking at how we grow all those programs. And the challenge is always going to come down to we don't have the workers to do that work. So we're thinking about how are we going to be able to get this work done? And what comes along with those projects is all of the support. For example, the event that Victoria hosted at Town Hall right before Halloween, you know, was a really wonderful outreach event, and it was a ton of work for her. So just thinking about that, that we do need to support these programs and understanding that the county is still going to demand ongoing reports for the next year. And we also are in the middle of these two studies, the countywide study and the LAFCO study, which are very critical, probably to what the district's going to look like at the end of this next budget. So for, for all of those factors, I think we're going to have to be creative about how we can support our own staff and then how we can support and get these programs done.
You know, just if I chime in, to a certain extent, the budgeting process is one where you sort of lay out where you think things might go, and you create, as I said before, placeholders to say, I've got the option for that. And then, to a certain extent, any, any careful management would involve redefining a job description and an economy, a pool of applicants. And sometimes you find you need the flexibility to be able to change based on who's available and, and all that. And I would just say, I, I'm hearing a lot of strong support for this as a, as a concept, and I'm not disagreeing with that. And I've just, I'm looking at, how does this look from the outside about sort of this increase in staffing? And and me, I would take your title here, and I would make it Program Administration Manager or something else that makes it less, that sounds of, oh, here's somebody who's going to
really agree.
Didn't answer the phone, okay? And I realize that's not what you're thinking at all, but just to make the title more oomphy.
I would make it Senior Program Manager. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty good salary. And it's, you know, I mean, I come from nonprofit and profit world. That's a good salary, even, even in tech, it's not a bad one. So for running programs even, that's pretty good. But yeah, I would definitely think it's really smart to take administration out.
And keeping it as general and flexible as possible, because the needs of the work are going to continue to change. So I think that's a really good point.
I'd like to give some background, too. When we went out on the District I'd, I'd like to give some background, too. When we went out on the district operations manager, uh, we did sourcing for that position for a year and a half, almost two years. Could not find ample candidates. And the dilemma was whether to make it fire-centric or make it more, and let's say, program-centric or administrative. I weighed in on, let's do the operational, which was fire-centric. And that's where Dave's skill set fit very well, because it's very, very operational, it's very tactical. It's how to get these projects done. And so the candidates that we see were either candidates that had the fire background, or they had administration. And when I say administration, I mean, uh, directors of agencies, assistant city managers, or city managers from agencies were interested at that price point to help. Those are the kind of skill sets that I think would be warranted in this position. But we didn't, I didn't look at those candidates, because I really wanted to go the operational directive. And that was to look with somebody with, with very high-level fire experience, because I thought that's what was most important for the agency at this point, pinpoint of, of growth. Now that that's been filled, then it's like, what are the next nineteen months? How are we going to use this, this staffing? As is pointed out, not to start the, the fiscal year in twenty twenty-three, but to end it. Because once, once these, uh, positions are committed, it's very difficult, if, if not possible, to add on new positions. We can change the title, we can change the, the position description anytime, but we're kind of locked in. So it's going to be a locked-in for about, about nineteen months. And you, you've got to think about your programs, where you want them to go, and is this the staffing that's going to support it? Thank you.
I'm, I'm just thinking, when we have to present it on, and I know we shouldn't spend so much time on one line item, but, um, when we have to present it externally, as George said, but also, um, even to, um, our colleagues, it's been a lot of growth, very fast, with a lot of people and a lot of additions. And not that it's a bad idea, but I think we just have a, have to have a really good story for why. And I think it does have to reflect the choices we've made in the strategic plan. Even if this goes beyond what we have, you know, the plan we have for now, where is that going to go that next year? And how is this supporting it directly? And then I think we have a good story. So.
Yeah. I do want to, um, while we're talking about employees, I mentioned something that Marcy kind of brought up is, you know, Victoria, this last outreach event she had was just very overwhelmed. Um, I think she ended up getting, uh, overtime hours. And so another position, I guess you could say that we're, uh, considering is, is a temporary seasonal employee position. And this would be, uh, people who just come in, you know, twenty dollars an hour, uh, price tag. They come in for a week or so, two weeks to help Victoria, uh, do the grunt work, the go-for-work, I guess you'd call it. Um, and so that way Victoria can keep her focus on, on the cert and not setting up tables and, and, you know, um, so I guess would like to hear.
It might be an events person, too. Potentially it could be an events person.
Could be.
I think, yeah, it's, it's the same kind of thing. I think we need to look at that event and decide how worthwhile it was versus piggybacking on other existing events, and what the difference was in terms of, you know, how we rate that for success. And then decide if we, I mean, she definitely needs help if we keep going at the rate, rate we are now, but I think that we might want to look at that. So just want to be cautious.
Yeah, yeah. So would your recommendation be maybe hold off on the temporary seasonal employee position for now, uh? Keep it as a placeholder?
Go ahead and present it. I think we go ahead and present it. And I think that we just be ready for those questions.
For the pushback.
Okay. What was the success of, of the things she spent her time on besides just cert? What were the success of those events? Or is it just an events person? Or do we pull back on some of that event stuff? Is it really winning enough? It's, I just think we need the story.
Okay.
And the, um, I mean, you're right, when you mentioned, uh, there has been a lot of growth. And really, I think that, uh, almost as a result of the, you know, last year's, you know, audit and threat and getting the whole public involved. You know, since then, there's been a lot of presence of the district in people's lives, and in all positive ways, you know, with, you know, projects going on in Almonte right now, and, and, you know, uh, has, you know, the, the, the HIZs and the, the, the change in the way that brush chipping is going, we, we seem to be very omnipresent, which is exactly the way we should be. In ways where we were not being, years before, we were very limited by what we could do, and we, we had, we could barely spend what we had on the programs we could manage as a seven-person team, essentially, with, well, make ten total accounting commissioners. Um, we really have come a long way. I think it's something to be celebrated. I think people are still expecting more. You know, one of the reasons why I was, was really excited about the, the the strategic fuel break, and I know while we're very dependent on others like Mid-Penn for making that happen, just seeing my neighbors' reaction to that, like, wow, you, you know, something is really being done on an overall town-wide basis. Big dollars are being spent to make big changes. I think that's what people want. And my fear, it, I, I'd rather, people want that, we are constrained by how the budgeting process works and how we kind of get locked in in advance. We can't, we add positions, even though we have the money to spend on, we're locked in ten months from now from saying, hey, we need someone else, let's bring them in. We kind of have to, I want to err on, on growth side here. Even if you don't hire somebody, we need to sort of err in that direction, because we can't, we can always not hire, we can't add. Um, and that's what makes this process, you know, I, I don't like to work that way. I don't want to say, hey, we're going to hire all these people. It's, I don't do that just for the sake of it. Um, but to give ourselves that option between now and the next nineteen months, I feel like we have to lean that way. And I think people want more big things to come. Um, and actually, as we get down into the more of the programs and start thinking, where are the big programs going to happen? What kind of staff support is going to take to do that and continue what we already started? Is what I see, I, I hate to see us, I mean, this is kind of where our, our bottleneck is. Um, where we'll always be. And we have to decide, you know, how much gas we want to step on. This is where we have to make sure we, that we step on it here to make those things happen. And I, I don't mind spending time on this chart, because I think this chart is one of the most important ones, because it really does go to this, this strategy of what we want to do as an organization, so.
It's fifty enough then.
You know, I don't know. Well, we do have, um, I can go to the, let me go to the next slide real quick. Um, so this temporary employees, I think we're thinking, um, at least from what Jay said, these are just people that are helping out for a couple of weeks at a time, maybe a month max. Um, when I get to the next page, which I will get to here, now you're getting into your professional specialized services and independent contractor consultants. Um, and so the difference being, so outside professional services, that's going to be companies. Um, so yes, Marcy does show up, uh, but she is a representative working for MRG. She's not kind of an independent contractor. She works for a company. Um, that'd be, you know, Jackson Ricketts, he shows up, but he works for Jackson Rickett Drones, his company. Uh, Jeff Tarantino works for F and L. Um, so those are the, are outside professional services, people that, um, you know, that, the companies that represent us. Uh, independent contractors, those would be right now currently who we were paying, we pay Sarah. Um, and, uh, Dave until he transfers to an employee. So this is where we can bring somebody in to prep them for that employee position. They can, we can start them out as an independent contractor. And then, uh, as we did with Dave, sort of, um, promote them to the employee position. So, um, now this does cover Sarah, who, um, has, we've asked if she would like to become an employee and, and has, has so far is she's happy with her independent contractor position. So if we want to up this, thinking, okay, hey, there might be ideas for more employees that we don't want to show the employees yet. We want to just test it, test the waters and see if it works before we, we open up an actual employment position.
Interesting. Thanks.
Yeah, so I don't know, but people's thoughts are on that. Um, I guess I'll just quickly, I'll go over the other things as well, uh, the audit. Um, our, uh, our contract with IBAiley is expiring, so I've upped it because we're going to have to, um, renegotiate the contract or find, uh, new auditors. Um, counting services, that's me as your financial consultant, uh, outside legal fees, that's Mr. Chris Chelliden. Uh, and then outside professional services, as I said, that, that's, uh, our videographer, uh, Marcy at MRG. Um, we wanted to add, bump it up because, um, the district lot design. Um, so we'll probably have, uh, some design services to, to give us ideas of how we can, uh, utilize that lot better.
Kind, is now the time for me to, to digress on that bit?
You can, it, I'll, I'll just finish real quick, because why, why that number so high as compared to why, why, why there was the jump? Um, we're also going to be doing, uh, CWPP research for Dave. So, okay, now, go ahead, jump in.
Yeah, you know, uh, there's several projects in there. This includes, you know, a lot of people, you know, GIS projects, you know, biography projects, CWPP research, strategic planning coming up. So a lot of projects kind of over the next nineteen months. And what I, you know, am an advocate for is um, the district lot. You know, you, Dave started this off kind of mentioning that wants to do some work there just to sort of maintain that. Um, part of my strategic plan goal is looking at us, uh, sustainability, and that includes from a operational point of view. And I'd really like us to start the research, uh, what it would take to utilize that lot for us fully. Um, there are variety of needs talked about in terms of structure and building. This includes, um, things like community, you know, a community and teaching room, uh, storage for equipment that we buy, potentially place for an on, you know, on-service crew. Uh, offices for our staff, because right now, that also limits us in the future, because we have no place to put anybody. Uh, and it's really hard to attract people when you have no desk to put them anywhere. So really, what can that lot be used for architecturally? How could it be brought to its best use to the district? And because I figure, if we don't start looking at that, even have a plan, um, over the next almost two years, we'll never do anything there. So I'd like to see us, um, you know, there are plenty of firms here who know how to look at civic needs and how to turn that into architectural, uh, preliminary designs, uh, and I'd like to see that as one of our professional service costs over the next nineteen months. Yeah, that's what that is. I just wanted people to explain what.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, that's, yeah. Thank you. Thank you for the, the thorough explanation. So, yeah. So, um, I just curious to, to know people that, that, does this, you know, I, I, I don't want, if you're looking at that and going, my gosh, why, why did it jump so much? Uh, you know, I think it supports, uh, the direction that the district wants to go in, in its expansion. So, um, I wonder if everyone thinks that that looks good, and, uh, you can stand behind it.
We're going to need to detail out either as a note or something, so that people understand it. But there's a lot of projects going on under there.
Exactly.
And that's partly because we have to do things that way.
Mm-hmm.
Given our staff size.
Yes.
Just my thoughts.
Okay. And that's, yeah. So I'll be bringing, you know, uh, this to the, uh, commission. Um, probably not these exact slides, but I'll, uh, be presenting the A draft budget to the commission next week, a week from today. So, um, any revisions that you guys want to see before the full commission is presented with this, I'm, I'm happy to do, but um, I can provide more detail on kind of these, uh, accounts that maybe I don't want to say shocking numbers, but it's just, wait a second, why historically, you know, is that suddenly jumping up to, you know, three times the cost of what we actually spent in twenty-one, so.
Well, I think you're right to flag that as being a, a, an outlier in terms of scope. And, and I would just say, to the extent that we add a little more flesh to the, the, the concept of we have this lot, we always had this lot, and that we have certain options that we need to have the resources to be able to explore what we might do with them, and, and to just have people be aware of what maybe the top two or three options, what, what that might mean. Because I just heard now some ideas. I couldn't tell if some of that was equipment staging versus just, uh, plain office building kind of thing. I heard community room. And so I think that could use a little more, uh, definition.
I think, I think the word exploratory is, is the right word, exploratory. I don't know what should go there. I have no idea. And I've heard lots of different uses for it. I don't know if that lot supports one, two, three, or zero of these things. But if we don't, so I'd like someone who has those skills to say, here's what you could do with that. What's important to you guys to, to deal with. So exploratory is the right, the right word for it.
Okay. I'm all right with that.
Corey, do you prefer not to put the breakdown in the footnotes?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine putting the breakdown.
I think that might just make it simpler.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. Not a problem.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that is our little outside consultants. And then we move on to our contract services. Now, this is, uh, um, again, I won't know until January what, uh, the annual increase is. So, um, I think I just did like a, a four percent uh, calculation. Um, and then this is just, yeah, so these are all of our, our fire services. I don't think much has changed. Uh, we're still looking to have Station Eight, um, the extra fire season staff. Um, you can see I budgeted more, uh, for the current fiscal year, and then budgeted less for uh, fiscal year twenty-three. I think we didn't, we haven't really used the outside or the extra fire season staff. And, and part of that is, you know, Station Eight was able to cover some of that during the summer. So I would expect that extra fire season staff is, is lower uh, due to the extra coverage we have for Station Eight.
And let's face it, we've, we've kind of dodged a, a fire bullet here by having our early rainfall and not having so many, uh, red flag days. I think that was extraordinarily fortunate, uh, summer for us here.
Yes. So, uh, the, the fire protection hand crews, that's, um, Jay, that's working with, uh, uh, Santa Clara County Fire. Do you want to explain slightly what that entails?
Um, Central Fire has a division, uh, under Chief Battalion Chief, uh, Matheson, Mike Matheson. And that's dedicated to wildfire resiliency in the county. And, uh, part of their program's going to be developing, uh, hand crews. We hoped that would occur this fiscal year, and it was off to a pretty good start, but then what happened is COVID and um, loss of personnel and all. So that didn't really get off the ground. Now it is, uh, getting off the ground. And it's going to be hand crews, equipment, trucks, and basically Central Fire coming in with their crews and working with their partner agencies such as Los Altos Hills, doing vegetation management. And it could be in areas such as burn preserve, could be along our evacuation routes. It could be, uh, along the strategic fuel break, all of these areas. And so this is funds set aside, depending upon how well that program, uh, um, marshals up this year. And any questions or thoughts? Does that seem like a good plan? Uh, we've had it in the budget before, but we're trying to get it implemented this year. George looks like.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that looks like it makes sense.
Yeah. And I think the more we can partner with other agencies, be, because I do have a sense that there's not a great desire to really bulk up on staff in the district. But to keep the programs going and to keep expectations where the residents, I feel, want them, we're going to have to then leverage off of other staffing. And so other staffing would be Central Fire.
Right.
And that comes with a cost that's going to be higher than, than some other kind of staffing. Uh, really, uh, the other part of the staffing is, is, uh, Fire Safe Council. And you'll see that as we, um, one of the budget items coming up in November at the meeting is going to be with Fire Safe Council and their agreement for twenty twenty-two. So we're leveraging from other staffing, uh, in agencies to the benefit of the district through partnerships.
And, and I don't know if it's worth highlighting to say that our work to establish or re, or staff Fire Station Eight is something that we're consider, that we're continuing. That's what this looks like. And, and I don't know, uh, Jay, if we have a, if this is a three-year plan, or so, it's just very hard to change things without some kind of sense of the duration, but, but whether we're in a position to make a commitment like that, and I think it would be helpful. And we, if we, if we could.
The agreement was written to be an ongoing, uh, agreement.
Okay.
So it does contemplate then rotating into the, the, the following year and the following year, unless the parties want to change it. So it was not a one-year, one-time agreement. It was written more of an evergreen kind of agreement. Is that what you're referencing, Station Eight? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, we definitely want to do that. I think we, it, it was really interesting, you know, as you, as you surmise, we were fortunate with the fire season, but we just nailed the, the dates, almost. fortunate with the fire season, but we just nailed the, the dates almost dramatically with June fifteenth to October thirtieth. And the chief called me and said, I want to stop it. I did the Latin, the, the second of the last week in October because we've got this atmospheric river, which then I understood to be rain coming. And it worked out, uh, really not having to go that extra week. So we had already budgeted into November if need be had that extra reserve in that agreement. So, um, yeah, I think it worked out well. Uh, every year is a new year. Um, it worked out well for Central Fire, worked out well for the district. Um, we'll get the results back in a debriefing from how it looked out for Palo Alto, because they own the station. They have probably more difficulty getting the crews together to staff a station eight. And so we'll just have to see how that works for them.
But did this help them in, in a way that they would think is significant in maintaining their staffing and not having, say, layoffs or other issues in Palo Alto?
I don't think it hit that sweet spot, uh, commissioner. I think what it did is it stressed their already thin staff to then have to do more work that perhaps they would not have wanted to do. That's just kind of how I surmise it. When you're downsizing and you're losing staff and then you have the illness and, and the comp and all of those, then you, you look around and you go, wait a minute, who's going to staff station eight who's here? And it's, I think it's that added pressure on that workforce. That was the impression I was getting.
Okay. But to the extent that this is not necessarily evergreen, but rolling contract means they could, they could do their staffing and planning. You know, January, knowing it's coming in.
Yeah. And a couple of times Central Fire didn't have to step in and pick up some days for them when they couldn't put the crews together.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Yep.
That's great.
Yeah. So that, so what we did is with the partnership, we had the default or the backs, the backdrop. We were deep enough to where we weren't just solely dependent on that crew on that day showing up or else we didn't have coverage. So that's really the design of a good plan. And I think, you know, it's called sustainability. I think, you know, and I can use that as an example for the district, the sustainability of the district. So we don't get this momentum going and then not know what to do with it to keep it sustained. And I think that that, if, if you've been in, in private sector, we all have who, who's on this phone. We all know the rigors of private sector. You've got to have sustainability. And I think that's what the three commissioners and certainly I am looking for with the fire district is having a staff that's sustainable. Uh, as we looked at fire station eight and, and we put together a sustainable program. So if Palo Alto crew wasn't available that day, there was a sustainability and a default with Central Fire coming in and it worked. Thank you. Yeah. Joan, comments?
I think that makes sense. Okay. It's good reason. Yeah. Okay.
We'll move on to the meat, the projects and programs. So, yeah, here's, here's all of, all the good stuff that we like to talk about. We continuing our, our chipping, uh, the, the monthly drop off. That's, uh, you know, to the foothill college. That, um, is done through green waste. Now home ignition zone, we bumped that up. And the, the thinking there, this is, I think, kind of been what we've hoped to do since the beginning and just couldn't because COVID sidetracked everything with H I Z. What we couldn't get to people's homes, but, um, we want to implement, I think, a rebate program. And it would be that uh, the homeowner would receive their, uh, you know, their home, uh, ignition zone, uh, report from, uh, from fire safe council. And it would have, uh, you know, recommendations of how to, uh, create uh, defensible space to keep their home fire safe. And if this involves maybe cutting down a tree that's within the certain distance around the home, we would have some sort of rebate program that the residents could use as an incentive to, um, to get, get that work done and make their home fire safe. And it would be sort of a placeholder amount of about three thousand dollars, uh, that we could do as a rebate per resident. So, um, Jay, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add about that?
Um, no, I think, I think you, you, you portrayed it accurately. About two years ago, Commissioner Tyson, if you recall, Commissioner Spring, I brought to the commission a rebate program for H I Z. It never really moved forward because we were just starting to convene management audit. And so we just kind of let things status quo until we got through the management audit, which took a number of months to do. So this is going back and picking up the threads of that program. It's not a replacement for tree removal. Um, it is really brush removal. And, um, it, it's a rebate for if I've, I've talked with various property owners who, when they do the chipping program, and I say, how much did it cost for you to be able to remove this brush to the side of the road for chipping? It was anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars up. And so the rebate program is to use the H I Z and, and motivate the resident to immediately take action and not just take a H I Z and say, oh, that was nice. And then the paper never gets looked at again and there's no effect from it. So it's, it's very much a standard rebate amongst public agencies. You see it in drought. Where if you have a drought inspection and you do certain things and you get certain rebates back from that. So it's that same kind of program. It's not unusual. Um, I believe Saratoga has a rebate program for trees. Um, other districts have rebate programs. So it is encouraging and motivating the resident to take action based upon the service of an H I C. Um, so that's what that is about. And I'll just leave it at that unless there's any questions there.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Yeah.
What Corey did, she grouped all the H I H F R programs together. And Corey, when you finish the slide, then I want to move to the, to the forward looking.
So, um, yeah, I did that. Um, we, we changed the name, uh, this, this account right here. Uh, evacuation route and road hardening. Last year it was, uh, shaded fuel breaks. So, yeah, we want, we want just to, to, uh, use the, the correct terminology. Um, but, you know, it's, it's, we're looking to, you know, we want to continue doing our, our, uh, road hardening as we're doing with Moody Road right now. Um, the open space fuel break program that is for, uh, the, um, like mid pen, uh, projects, all those, those things we've been discussing. This is a new one here, this I two eighty fuel break project. This is something that, uh, Dave brought as a suggestion. Um, his quote was in collaboration with fire safe council and with permit through Caltrans. Hazardous fuel reduction will be completed along approximately five point five miles on interstate two eighty from Page Mill Road to Permanente Creek. And it's an estimated two-year project at a cost of one point one million. Um, so I've just divided that by two for the fiscal year twenty three. And, um, you know, Davey's, he's not here today to, to explain more. Jay, I don't know if you can provide more details on that.
Uh, no, I think, I think that's good detail. Um, we're going to meet with the ad hoc committee for integrated hazardous fuel reduction. I want an opportunity for those commissioners to hear about it. And then it'll be reported fully at the commission meeting on November sixteenth.
I think that's me again too. And I gotta say, I drive that road all the time and it, it taps my hide to see how disheveled the darn place looks. And I know how Caltrans is. Uh, and so if we can find a way to get really the work they should be doing done for all of our benefits, um, then I'm all for it.
And, uh, I'll just point out the, the challenge we have. Again, sometimes the crazy thing, especially in the public sector, the challenge we have spending money. You know, you look at these line items, the H I Zs and evacuation routes, that's, uh, fire safe council. Um, the strategic fuel break, that's mid pin. We're, we don't do that work. We depend on them to do the work and they have their own processes. Um, we experienced with F S C, a lot of staff turnover. So, uh, you know, the staffing really is, is the challenge. But I think we're getting good traction in being able to move forward, um, with all of these various different programs. And, um, specifically with the H I Zs, uh, there's been some effort to go out and look for more providers. And it's very difficult. We did find a private sector provider that are kind of like off-duty fire folks. Uh, but they all got deployed. Um, so when, when we were having all the big fires. So anyways, that's an ongoing challenge and we're trying to be creative. I, I think sometimes I think our goat grazers are our most dependable workers.
You know, Jay, uh, the, uh, council member Lisa Schmidt had an, an effort along these lines and, and can you, can you just tell me, has that sort of stalled?
Well, that's pretty much what Marcy alluded to. As, as it turned out, the work crew were, uh, off-duty firefighters. And so the time they had set aside to come out and work with the town was right then the fire started. And they just all disappeared. We didn't hear, I, I don't think, um, council members Schmidt heard much back from them. But they, it, it no longer was a viable, uh, project and they were not a viable company. And I would say what we're doing for an estimated five hundred dollars an H I Z, they would charge two thousand dollars an H I Z. So it's a poor for-profit company versus a nonprofit company like fire safe council that does everything they can to keep costs at a minimum and also provide, I just think outstanding service and expertise that there's no parallel to. I, I'm just very impressed with, with the service they can provide and the expertise behind it. Marcy, any comments on that? I think you were, no.
Uh, nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan, you had some comments?
Nope. Makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on, talked about goats. There's our goats. Uh, we're looking to increase it tightly. And that's the hope that, hey, wait, maybe we can get the goats somewhere else besides just, uh, burn preserve. So. Planning for another location, uh, you know.
You know, I, I want to say that's where we stalled last year. We needed to do that or this year. We needed to do that this year. Did not have the staff time to do it, could not take it on. So I'm finding being thwarted at a number of, of junctures in the road where we know as a staff what that next step or what that next expansion needs to be. And we just, in fact, we have a little motto amongst us. No new ideas. Okay. Stop it. No new ideas. Because it just catapults into, okay, we can do this and we can do that. And then it's like, stop. No new ideas. Go back and deliver what you've said. And it's, it's a little, little bit of mirth, but it's, it's dead serious. And it's the kind of thing that, I shouldn't say dead serious. It's very serious. But it keeps me up at night thinking, oh, we should have just done more at Burn Preserve. We should have brought the goats and had them there longer. But it, to do that and to work with, with all of the logistics, Parisima, the town, the goat vendor who's got more requests than he can even imagine facilitating. It, it takes a lot of time to, I guess, program manage that. I won't stay administer it. Program manage it.
Direct perhaps.
Okay. Next, uh, next we have those, uh, emergency cert arc supplies, um, that keeps trending upwards because Victoria has just been doing a stellar, fantastic job. So, um,
I will, I will tell you, I've, I've got to interrupt you because I'm getting glib now. I, I, it must be that I need a sugar high or something. But where I just had to drop my jaw is when Victoria calls me and says, Jay, I've run out of storage space, but I've got this great plan. I said, what is it? It's storing materials for the ark underneath El Monte Station. I said, stop it. You can't be doing that. That's a flood area. We are just so out of storage. We just are so out of so many things that, and she was serious and probably she's going to do it. Just because all of my nose just didn't make any headway. Um, so when I look at the art supplies, I'm thinking, okay, how many of them are in plastic boxes underneath the, um, El Montes in, in this, in the space in the, in the crawl space down there. But those are the kinds of things that we're facing when we try to accelerate and expand our programs. Thank you.
Sounds like a good list for you to keep running on there.
One of the stories, you know, maybe we.
Okay, next, we have a new account. Yay, new accounts. Uh, this is vegetation and response equipment and maintenance. And this would be so obviously for maintenance, repair and maintenance of the Masticator and the, the Boeing. Um, but also allows for, uh, purchase. We certainly, we would like to have, uh, something for, for Dave to use. Uh, some sort of vehicle that has, um, towing, uh, radio communication, emergency response capabilities. Um, well, not just Dave, but any, any staff, but he, he's the, the most fit for it at the moment right now. So, so this is, and then of course the maintenance of that gasoline, all that, all that fun stuff. So, um, that's my thoughts on this one. The hydrant repair maintenance additions. This is, um, again, just ensuring that our hydrants and the, uh, infrastructure beneath are up to par. Um, and then I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory, neighborhood evacuation drills, fire wise. You know, the, uh, temporary refuge area, that's something that we budgeted for in the current fiscal year. And I think there's just kind of been a delay in getting that. Yeah, every, everything's delayed, you know, so.
Staffing issue.
Yeah, yeah. So what, once that staffing issue is resolved, uh, we're off and running with that. Communications and outreach, uh, that's, uh, George, you were talking about earlier. So that's going to be all of our mailers and, uh, publications and flyers and, and just, uh, focusing on, I, you know, communication, I don't want to say. I'm like the advertisements, but you know, no, it's, yeah. And then emergency access roads. We have, yeah, I budget for this every year. And I think it's kind of always just kind of falls to the wayside because it's something that, again, we don't have staff. And so I'm sure that our emergency access fire roads are in, in grave need of some attention. So, um, yeah, that's something we would like to, once we have more staffing, focus on that, uh, because it's been ignored. And then of course, um, as with all the programs, we have the contingency. This is sort of the padding, um, that, so say that the H I Z rebate program is fantastically popular and we want to be able to, to provide more rebates so we can borrow from, from point A and cover point B, or the chipping program suddenly takes off when we go to year-round chipping for all the residents and suddenly everybody wants more. And you'll notice I, that's in blue for all sort of the main groupings. Um, there's a contingency that allows for extra spending. So I think that gets us through.
Uh, Corey, could you put up the fourth? Right now, and I'll just, uh, just take a few minutes just to go through it. Cause this is, the, this, the chart is a good summary of what we've just talked about.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the revised this month forward-looking resiliency chart. And, um, what it does at the, the top banner is it talks about the, the chart. Let me get the chart on my screen so I can.
Where is it? Yeah, I'm sorry. For some reason it's, there we go.
Okay. So the chart in the center of the top banner talks about it's built on fire science, the C W P P X four. And it's guided by the strategic plan. So this chart wraps up all of the three pillars of the district. On the right side, there is the interactive link because this is an interactive page. It's a single page. But if you have it on a desktop, now it becomes a book that can take you or a travel log that can take you to all of these different links. Over on the, the left, the let, the legend has some definition there. So I just want to start with that the chart is run by the Los Altos Hills Board of Commissioners. And then to the right, that segment, and this is where the management audit really has helped us define our programs. Because what this does is it lays out our programs for integrated hazardous fuel reduction in such a way that meets the requirements and the comments and wisdom behind the management audit recommendations. So if you'll notice on the far right, those are, those are community programs on the, on the left of that right are the resident programs. Now, if you look at the budget balance between what it costs to run those resident programs, the top half is H I Z brush chipping and then the monthly drop off. The bottom is what the resident can do for themselves. So that's what I call self-help or actualization. That by these links, it takes the resident to what they need to be doing. They're building their own resiliency. That's what management audit wanted to see. Help to the resident, but not doing it for the resident or not becoming a part of what the residence responsibility was. Over on the right, right, you've got the community programs. This is where now the meat of your budget is going. It's, it's the Page Mill Road evacuation that was done a year or so ago. It's the current, right now Moody Road. Moody Road became the hallmark in the closing remarks. In the closing remarks from management audit, and it said, this is exactly what we wanted the district to do. And it called out Moody Road. Well, my goodness, if they tell me what the win is, I want to do that. You know, quadruple. So we went from so in the budget, we're proposing going from one. El Monte evacuation to four, one, one a quarter for the new fiscal year. So we want to capitalize on that. And then you'll see the other ones. The two eighty vegetation management, that's similar to a Moody Road, only it's on a freeway. Weed abatement, the goats, the fuel breaks in open space and fire protection hand crews and the firewise community. So what we've done, and George, you were on board from the very beginning of this, you saw us now shifting funds out of the residential, the tree program mainly. Into then a community benefit in the highest targeted areas that benefits the most of the residents. That's what management audit said. George, does that ring true for you?
It definitely sounds very familiar.
It surely does. Okay. Now, if you switch over to the left hand side, let's take a look at what those parameters are. This is your fire protection and prevention programs. So the three things that I always say, the district. Defines itself by prevention, protection, and building resiliency. You're building resiliencies on the right. And now your prevention and protection is these components on the left. And you'll see each one reads down staffing resources that is. This station eight, the battalion chief, the upgraded equipment, the district parcel and high fire season staffing. So that's the strand there. Then the water systems is really interesting because this is an important change I wanted to mention to you. We know that goal three, as it is, I think, Marcy, no, goal four on hydrants is to take care of our hydrants, to repair, maintain and manage. But then also another part of that goal, I think, is very important is improvement to district owned hydrant water systems. And we're still pursuing how to do that. How do we improve what we own in that water system? One of the ways is every time Parisima does a water main improvement. We jump in and say, okay, we'll place where our hydrants are going to be relocated and we'll add some. That to me is key right into that box of improvement to our existing water system. And then moving on, we have evacuation zone haven. We have public alert system. Then we have community outreach and education. This is the heart and soul of what Victoria and Denise do. And then we have emergency road access that kind of lingers over there looking for staffing to help perk up that program. Then we have a bar that drops down that says potential future programs. And we had four in that box. We did three of them and we have early detection. We're still looking into that. I've looked into a number along with Dave, along with a couple of commissioners. We just, I can't find anything sound that I would want to bring to the commission on that level yet. Now, supporting all of this. Okay, great programs, good budget, good planning. But what does it take infrastructurally to do it? That's what this bottom tier is. And that is all the programs that report through the general manager. This is where you get your operations, your G I S, your cert analysis, finance, legal, risk management. Emergency Services Manager, District Clerk, P I O and Consultants. That's a heap of work. We've got just a couple of people that are doing it. But it takes all of this infrastructure down at the bottom, the platform, as I say, to support all of this good thinking and good programs that we have budget to. To implement. Up in the primary area. So that's a quick review of forward looking community resiliency chart. Comments? Very happy to have your comments on that. Joan, can I start with you? What do you think?
Beautifully organized. I think that, you know, you addressed all the the points of concern, showing that what we are providing as well as how we do it and how it is resident based. Although I really miss the tree program. Like that one a lot. The, yeah, it's it's perfectly presented.
Okay, okay. And I think it's a snapshot of the budget. I mean, all that we just went through for the last hour and twenty minutes is right there. George comments?
The only thing is, I'm just having trouble seeing where's our basic. Central fire contract here. Station eight, but I don't see.
There's no, yeah, there's no suppression.
I don't see the oomph here.
Right there.
Which is really where a lot of our budget is.
Okay. We left that out because that's the suppression, emergency medical service. This is the prevention and and resiliency charts. Do you want that in there?
Well, I don't know. See, when I read it, I thought protection meant meant the response to emergencies.
Okay, all right. Well, I can drop that in.
So you can either do that or just have you've got a little room there in the center left to just say. Kind of as a floating. A floating category.
Yeah, but you're right, because by leaving that out, I've left out a big divot in the budget. So thank you for for finding that. See, that's what happens when you get too into your versions, you stop seeing him anymore. So thank you for guiding me.
Details.
Yeah.
But it's it's a it's a nice chart. I like the graphics.
And it's all hyperlinked. So if a person's using this, it's on our website. All they have to do is click on any of these hyperlinks and it goes to our website page that has a volume of information that they can read. He's trying it. Okay, Roger, any comments?
Similar to George, I mean, I think this is a, I see this kind of evolved from the previous diagrams you've done, and I really like it as. A way for residents to understand what is the district. I think I don't like the title. Forward looking community resiliency. I don't, I think that's confusing and. In a way meaningless, you know, I know I recognize it's not, but I think someone from an outsider reading that's not going to know what that means. And I like that, as George says, you know, having. The box that shows that our contracts for fire suppression is another key pillar. This is everything we do. I think it's wonderfully organized that way. So it really is like. You know, if somebody asks, what do you guys do? This would be the chart if that were also. There as well. So it's more than just forward looking community resiliency. It's really what we do.
Okay. So could I have a contest? Who can come up with a better? I don't.
Don't take my criticism alone, but it's my.
So who came up with the title was your board president?
Maybe something. Future.
Play on Mark.
You know what? We can take this on in the marketing meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, sounds good, Joan. Yeah.
You know, I I think also I'd love to take this and give it to an agency to simplify visually. So you can use it a lot and we can use it also on the website. So it's just really easy to see what somebody wants to go for. It's so much info. I think that. They could probably maybe work it so it's a little easier to read. Beautiful job for it is. Not to say that.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you for taking a few minutes for that. Okay, Corey onward and upward.
Okay, yeah, and I think we're we're towards the tail end. Where did my little PowerPoint go? Where are you PowerPoint? Well.
Next steps, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's now I'm trying to to share. It doesn't want to share with me. See, hold on.
They have to stop sharing and then go back maybe.
Yeah. There we go.
Back to your PowerPoint.
There we go. Okay, so yeah, next steps. So we are going to take this budget that we've just discussed tonight and I'm just want to relook over my notes. I think we. Had suggested change for the administration manager. We'd like to call it the the senior program manager. So. That'll be. Change that we had, if anything, well, I'll add notes about sort of. Things that might stand out. I won't say red flags, but yeah, the. Accounts that had big changes from prior year, and we will bring that back to the full commission in one week.
Let me let me interrupt here. It doesn't really fit your slides. I apologize for interrupting because. The one other comment that I had, or is the way we came to the slides. There's one element missing from the way I read the budget originally and had a reaction because I love George and Joan's sense of which is. You know, if you look at, you know, the, we're still early, we don't know the full revenue or anything else. But this budget shows essentially. Another year of profit. Not spending everything. But I see we've reduced it over the past week or so. So it's. It's down to about seventy six thousand.
Seventy six, three sixty three is the the net change. Yeah.
And so you see a lot of these things. So that's where my, you know, earlier in the week, that number was larger. And my sense was, you know. How do we, and as someone who, I don't think this way, but how do we spend more money? That's always my question here is how do we really generate more things and use that these taxpayer dollars? And I just wanted to emphasize that that really was a key thing for me to be looking at. And then the question comes, where are our bottlenecks? You know, I think even the budget here, I don't believe we're going to be able to. Spend as much as we're budgeting in all these programs. We don't know how it's going to shake out, which ones are going to be problematic, which ones are not, but. This is is aggressive trying to spend as much as we've been budgeting here, and we're still going to be increasing our fund balance. Let alone the fact that we've been looking for years of how do we spend down this fund balance? This is not like the town where I think where we want to be continuing, you know, we like having a big savings account. We like to be really utilized in these things. You know, love your thoughts on. You know. That money sitting there is. Helps define us as an organization to others. Some of the reasons why I'm interested frankly in also moving forward on exploring what we do with a parcel. Something that can really increase what we can do for the community. That, you know, that uses some of the assets that we built up from the community from taking them through their taxes. So I just want to point that out. I think that. I expect this will be a subject of discussion in the full commission and certainly if members, I thought there'd be more members of the public here, at least one person. Discuss this. And they're going to look at that and say, you know. What are you going to do about all this money that's building up?
You know, Roger spoke up before I before I could because I I had the same reaction and that was this looks like a. Very solid incremental budget that gets us to roughly parity in terms of spending. However. In the past, you can see from previous years, we often have had unexpected large surpluses. I would expect that could continue, especially when I see some conservatism there. I mean, in what Corey showed of property tax revenues and. You know, I can't help the fact that people are knocking down perfectly good houses and building big expensive ones and increasing. I can't help that and.
It's not our fault.
But you know, let me let me say for our purposes here today of a one year kind of budget, I think this is okay. To leave it as this, but I do feel like it should be our. Our vision to say, let's develop a three year plan to reduce our reserves by. Ten million dollars or something. I'm just making up the numbers. And and how could we possibly, what things would be suitable from using taxpayer money in our district? That could accomplish that.
So I think you might want to redo the way you say that rather than saying, how do we spend this down? Do you see like, how do we supplement the programs to optimize use of?
Okay. Right, how do we, how do we invest in our community? To improve fires, fire safety.
Exactly right. Very good. So I think, because I had the same feeling too, and it's like, it's such an embarrassment of riches, right?
And it is.
What, and and I think, and to your point about, you know, having people run more people there to run the programs. Gee, I'm not saying that's a bad idea because I think it's a brilliant idea and it does need to happen. But again, I come back to the plan. And so, George, the fact that you brought up the three year plan, we go back and we look at the strategic plan. What are the areas where we really feel the growth has to happen? And it all relates back to our plan? Or how do we expand that plan so that we're taking that into account? And then we develop the programs that satisfy the plan, right?
Yep.
So that's, I just think we're doing a little bit backwards and that's a better way to base it.
Can I make a comment on that? I was on the LAFCO meeting today. I don't know if any of the rest of you were. But the LAFCO study, the main lesson learned or the main. Concept coming out of it right now is the most important thing a community can do. For, and I hope I'm not overstating it, but that's what was said, the most important thing a community can do for fire. Resiliency and fire protection is guess what? Evacuation route hardening. It's exactly what was said. And that's what's going to come out. Was anybody on that that call today? Okay, that was.
That was a great social media headline. That's a great social media headline. I think we should talk about that.
Yeah, and then then the the speaker went into the paradise situation. Where, and we have Commissioner Kearney, who was at Paradise. And was a part of that rescue operation and showed us the graphic videos or photos that he took there. And we all know that Paradise was the most prepared. For evacuation route. And for had even drilled it and was the most devastated by it not working. So if there's anything that I was that I took home after that meeting this morning at ten o'clock. Was we're on the right track as far as increasing our evacuation route hardening. So. I think, Joan, when you're looking for what is that we can do that does the most, it's that. I will tell you, it is so labor intensive. But we went through on Moody Road. George, you know, you and Lisa were out there. With the residents who off my property, I don't want you around here, where. To an outsider, it looks like we're doing the resident a favor to the resident. It's like, don't invade my property in my space. It's completely a contradiction to what people think should be being said, that's not being said. So that just says to me, we need so much more education and outreach and example, example and practice and practice. So the resident starts changing their behavior and lying in and wanting that assistance.
Two comments.
There's a lot to discuss on that one, but I'm not going to go into.
Two related comments. I agree with, I think George and Joan, both of what you're putting together is that. We need a an ongoing larger plan for where how we're going to deal with this surplus. And actually, we have a strategic plan to figure out during this budget. So the results of the end of, you know, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and maybe we should, we have to schedule really by the end of next year. We need to have an strategic plan. And I would say that would be the focus of it is. You know, we have sort of a two year, short term one. We're in a very different position than we were at the start of it. You know, that's what that effort's gonna. Should be looking at. And that's gonna, that's gonna be upon us very soon. So I totally agree. That's what the focus of that should be. How do we really move to another level to invest? I like that word, George. Be able to make a sizable investment in this community of what we've built up. On a very, on a much more minor comment. One of the things I think we had expected we would be spending a huge amount of money on, but some capital assets was, I just want to point out that. This, the fire station upgrades have kind of come to a halt. That was something we meant we were intending to be doing. And I realize we didn't talk about this in our discussion tonight. I thought you guys should hear as well that. You remember the guy was coming in and talking about what we could do, rearranging and everything else, make it more, you know, up to date. Those efforts have kind of stalled and are kind of indefinitely stalled from what I'm seeing, just because the central fire is just busy with a lot of other things. It's no one's, no one's fault. But it's kind of a shame, but that's one of our capital assets that takes capital money. And we can't really spend dollars on it when we want to, so. Right, that's it. But so our strategic plan, I like getting this going now early that we should be thinking that next year strategic plan needs to be thinking about. Next level investment.
Yeah, absolutely. And I do think then to any of the areas that we want to supplement. Especially for employees. If we have it in the plan where that growth is supposed to happen, then you have a real solid story for when you're querying. And the optics for the public is great as well. So.
I apologize for interrupting Corey. I just wanted to make sure we finish that.
Not a problem. Yeah, yeah. So. Anyway, yeah, this is just, yeah, closing it out. We're going to bring this back in November. I'm hoping that the commission will want to have a meeting in December where we can again sort of focus. With all seven members. And I'll have more information, you know, as we get, that's the problem is starting so early is that. I really only have billings from July for a lot of the vendors, July through September. I don't have October billings yet. So I only have four months of data to be working with. When we get into December and then, of course, by the January meeting. Hopefully I have half a year of data, which will give me a much better idea of. What are reprojected fiscal year twenty two figures will be, which helps me then to project for twenty twenty three. But yeah, we'll, we really want to hammer this budget in and then have full commission. But yeah, we'll, we, we really want to hammer this budget in and, and then have full commission support, support with that. So it is the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting where we sort of decide to finalize the budget, submit to Oba because their deadline is February twelfth, which is before our February fifteenth meeting. Now, Oba has been generous in the past that if there are little subsequent changes after January eighteenth, that they will allow us to revise the budget because the county exec does not review until February twenty-second to twenty-fifth. And our budget is very simple compared to a lot of many other county departments. So they, that's why they've been so generous to allow us sometimes, oh, wait, 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 can we change this real quick? So the board commissioners adopts the final budget at the April meeting. And then the County San Clara finalizes their recommended budget April twenty-second, so right after that. Then they have their budget workshops in May. And finally, the board supervisors have the budget hearings in June. So that is the next steps on that. And I think that is the end of the report.
I have a couple, I just.
Yeah, yeah.
Closing comment that might be helpful for the committee to know. And that is, you know, we were going to make a major investment in a water tender. And that's also been held. The company that, their handmade, the company that makes those items during COVID had to release their staff, close down their factory. And then in reopening it, it didn't work out where they were. They may have given up their lease. I don't know, but they moved out of state to another state. Just started production again. As a result, we're down pretty far in the queue for a water tender. And to my knowledge, it's not been ordered yet and I don't have any anticipation. It takes about a year for it to be built as to when we're going to get it delivered. So here's another example of a fairly large investment in order that's not coming through. I'm also concerned about the Masticators with supply chain problems. If we order today, we're not sure when we're going to even take receipt of it. So those are all the kinds of things that kind of get in the way of the spending and, and the, the, the tools that we need to make some big strides for the district. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Any more comment among the commissioners on these items?
No, I, I have, sorry, go ahead, George.
Please, Joan.
Okay, unrelated. I was just thinking, just because people are pinging me from work while we were working tonight. And the company I work for now does a lot of data modeling. And they do free programs for like nonprofits or, you know, or certain groups that need that kind of thing. And I didn't know if we need more modeling for some of our activities or other things that go on with fires in our community. But I just wanted to put it there in your ear, that something like that might be a possibility in the future. So we do predictive analytics and, you know, you can really see by, by maybe the programs that we run, what kind of results we expect by some of the modeling. Just came to me from out there.
Okay. Any other comments from the, the grid here? Seeing no public members here, I'm not going to ask for public comment. I see no one has, no one has come since then. So in that case, with no other comments, I'll move to item for adjournment. Hearing nothing. This concludes the November ninth, twenty twenty-one special meeting of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District Board of Commissioners Standing Budget Subcommittee. The meeting is adjourned at eight forty P M. District Clerk Vargas, please stop the recording.